Welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, March 21st, 2018. We're in the Senator hearing room here at Courthouse Square. And we begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. So would you join us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we begin our meeting with public comment, and there was no one signed up for public comments, so we'll move right into our consent agenda. And I'm not sure whose turn it is.
Madam Chair, if I could, I'd make a motion to approve the consent calendar this morning on it, in it, under Public Works, approve an order appointing Julie Jackson to the Solid Waste Management Advisory Council with a term ending February 26, 2022, and receive notice of hearings officers' recommendation and schedule a public hearing from May 2, 2018 to consider a zone change comprehensive plan, case number 17004-HELMS, Clerk's File 5741.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve those two items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. They are approved. All right, under action items, the first item is under Board of Commissioners, and we have Carrie Sessoms here. We're so excited that you could come this morning. This is to consider approval of an order appointing Carrie to the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council with a term ending July 31, 2021. And Lisa Miller, you want to kick it off? Lisa?
Good morning, sure. Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Lisa Miller with Business Services, Volunteer Services Coordinator. I'm just here this morning to introduce a new appointee recommended to our Public Safety Coordinating Council, Carrie Sessoms. She's here to introduce herself and answer any questions you may have.
Very good. And Carrie is the representative of the Local Alcohol Drug Planning Committee, correct?
Correct.
And so they recommended, I think it was Jeff Putterbaugh that was in that role before, and so he is no longer part of that committee, and Carrie was the one that was selected to take his place. So we're very excited to have you, because I've known you for a very long time, and I think you'll lend a great perspective to the Public Safety Council. So why don't you tell us a little bit about you, who you are, and why you're interested in being on the council?
So I've been serving on the Local Alcohol Drug Planning Commission for around six years, I think, and there has been a collective change in direction as far as our group goes in targeting addictions in without, within Marion County, as well as mental health issues, along with the change of the Health Department with a new name. I think they're in the process of changing their name. So we think it would be really important to have a liaison between Public Safety Council and the Local Alcohol Drug Planning Commission. Ironically, the time of the meeting is super helpful, as my daughter is leaving for college in the fall, and I'm going through a little moment of, oh, boy, what am I going to do now? And so I don't want to keep the restaurant open past 2:00. So they elected me, and it sounded like a really good fit for the time being, as well as a real passion for helping people that still struggle with addiction within our county.
Thank you. And Commissioner Cameron co-chairs Public Safety Council. Anything you'd like to ask?
Carrie, first of all, I want to thank you for all you do in the community out in Stateon and beyond, and the good food that we get to have once a month out there. I think that's the priority, right?
Right.
As a fellow restaurateur.
Got to have the bacon.
Yeah, as a fellow restaurateur, I appreciate how hard it is and the opportunities you give employees to stand on their feet and get going.
Thank you.
You'll be a great addition. And I'm trying to keep up with Chair Carlson on the Public Safety Coordinating Council this year, and I cannot do it, so you're going to have to help me next year when she's retired and.
More than happy.
We're in it together, so looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Questions?
No, I wanted to find something to give her some grief about, but there's nothing. It's just all good. She keeps showing up in the Stateon area and others, doing good things. I see a list of the Harvest Festival Committee head, Foothills Church, St. Joseph Shelter, Stateon Boosters, but I've seen you everywhere you're involved, and we're happy that you pointed our way.
Thank you, Sam.
And the Thanksgiving celebration that involves our law enforcement folks, too, and the sheriff's office.
Couldn't do it without all of them, for sure. The numbers are just crawling. I think last year, we served well over 1,500 people. So it's a great community event for all people to come to, and that's the focus, is to share, to share yourself with someone that you probably would never share yourself with. So we really enjoy it.
So the last thing I would add before we make a motion and take a vote is that you were, your application was presented to the Public Safety Coordinating Council at our recent meeting, and the council unanimously endorsed your membership to the Board of Commissioners for us.
Thank you, Janet.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve an order appointing Carrie Semens to the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council with a term ending July 31, 2021.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve Carrie Sessoms to the Public Safety Council. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And you are approved.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. We'll see you at the next meeting.
Thanks for coming in.
Item number two, this is to consider approval of an order recommending denial of six Oregon Liquor Control Commission liquor license renewals. So last week, if people were paying attention, we actually approved a whole roster of liquor licenses, I think it was under consent, and six of them had letters attached to them saying that the Board of Commissioners was approving them because we had no other recourse. However, these are significantly behind in their property taxes, and I think it even listed the amounts by which they were behind in their property taxes. We had a discussion about this on Monday and determined that actually we did have recourse to be able to not only send the letter with the delinquent property taxes, but also to recommend denial rather than approval along with that letter. So we're, this is a do-over, so we're bringing these six back, and there's now an order to recommend denial. So any discussion on that before we?
Pretty well covered it.
Yep.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion?
Okay, I would. Madam Chair, I'd make a motion if we do approve the order that recommends denial of six Oregon Liquor Control Commission liquor license renewals. Should I name them, or?
I don't know that we need to name them in the motion.
You can just say, "Listed on Exhibit A."
Listed on Exhibit A.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 All right, that one is approved. So now for the good stuff. This is under Community Services. Consider approval of a proclamation designating the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Marion County. And we have a whole host of people here. Tamara Getch, Patrice Altenhofen, Allison Kelly, Shanice Starr, Julie Hilty, Sue Bloom, Mary Grimm, Pete Teller, and the youth from Leslie Middle School. So, and it looks like Sheriff and District Attorney are here. Got a whole lot of people, so let's bring everybody up front.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Tamara Getch, Director of Community Services, and happy to be joined by such great partners in our community in recognition of community effort that's been going on for years around the need for us to do what our community does best and make a difference for kids and families by raising up and bringing attention to the importance of prevention of child abuse. I'm joined, as I said, by a lot of great partners today, and rather than going, introducing them, I'll have them introduce themselves as they have a part in today's presentation. This year's campaign is focusing on prevention, and you should have all found a blue pinwheel at your computers this morning. And pinwheels, ribbons, stickers are all part of the symbolism that we are trying to spread throughout the county this year to help raise that awareness. Additionally, as has been a tradition in this community, we're going to be having the Blue Ribbon Tree, which will be located at the Capitol. I think ribbons will be going up shortly, within a week or so, and it will be ready for an event that we'll talk about in a few minutes. The ribbons on those trees represent the number of children impacted by abuse in Oregon. A little somber reminder, but it really does drive us to make a difference for our kids in Marion County. I want to personally thank one of my staff members, Mary Grimm, who unfortunately was not able to join us today, but she has done a lot of great work behind the scenes, working on the planning committee, but she was also deeply supported by Julie Hilty from Family Building Blocks, who, together, they're a dynamite team and have been doing some great work over the last several months. This committee really wants to encourage each and every one of our community members to do its part, and knowing that each of us has a role to play in preventing child abuse, and whether that is being a neighbor that a child could come home to, being home with your own children, participating on a board within the community for those services that are making a difference for those kids and families in our community, or whatever your role is in the community, we just ask you to do your part, really be thoughtful about it in the next 30, 40 days, and be thinking about what you can do to make a difference. And so we're going to use this mic and ask each and every one of you to speak into that as we walk through our presentation this morning.
Good morning. My name is Patrice Altenhofen, and I'm the Executive Director of Family Building Blocks. We operate relief nurseries, helping families, and early start in Marion and Polk Counties. Thank you so much for your time today. Family Building Blocks' mission is prevention. It is keeping children safe and families together. Last year, we served over 750 families and 1,300 children. We're very proud of our work, but we know there is so much more to do. The surveying facts in Oregon and in Marion County are that there were almost 12,000 confirmed victims of child abuse in neglect in Oregon in 2016, and almost 1,300 victims of child abuse in neglect in Marion County in that year. The total number of incidents in Marion County actually increased by 6.5% from 2015 to 2016, and neglect and the threat of harm continue to be the greatest type of child abuse in our county, 587 and 491 respectively. Almost half of these victims are under the age of six, this age of children that continues to be almost normal population. It's really, really heartbreaking. And out of all the children abused in neglect in Oregon, 93.5% of the victims of the abuse was perpetrated by a family member or someone living in the child's home. And this reminds us that all families need support, and working with families is one of our county's most important investments. Our campaign incorporates a comprehensive approach geared to supporting families and caretakers. As a group, we believe that every parent wants what's best for their child, and that often parents face overwhelming life circumstances that make it very hard to provide adequate care to their children. So we wrap around parents as a community to stop what is often an intergenerational cycle of abuse and neglect.
Morning, Commissioners. My name is Walt Eggloff, and I have the privilege to serve as the District Attorney of Marion County. Our message here simply is to report any suspicion or disclosure of physical abuse or sexual abuse, and oftentimes that's neglect of little kiddos that just aren't getting the care that they need. You want to report that. This statute, this law, gives us all an amazing opportunity to be a champion for kids right on the front line. And so any, any citizen, any community member that has reasonable cause to believe that a child has been abused or neglected should call the hotline. I put it in my phone. Everyone get out their smartphone, one pointer or another, and put 378-6704. Did I get the number right?
Yeah.
That's the number for Marion County Child Abuse Reporting, and that allows you to have that easy and make that call, because when you do suspect abuse, you need to report it immediately to the Department of Human Services or law enforcement. And if it's not during work hours, you dial 911. So that's our message, be a champion for kids.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Myers.
Sure.
My part of this is that all of us have a role. There's a saying that it takes a village to raise a child, and I would submit it takes a village to protect a child. All of us have a role in this. All of us have to take action. All of us must protect the most vulnerable in our community, that is, our children.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Shanice Starr. I'm Executive Director of CASA of Marion County. I'm so excited to have our organization be able to be at the table. Just under two years ago, we were only serving 10% of the kids in care, and we're closing in on serving, increasing that to 50% of our kids in care. So I'm proud of our work as well. The important thing, I think, for all of our organizations that are represented and part of the child abuse prevention planning team is that we all need volunteers, and our families need help every step of the way. We need volunteers to help with the prevention services with Family Building Blocks. We need volunteers to help with the kiddos and the families when they unfortunately need to be seen at Liberty House and CASA as well. Once they are in foster care, we need those volunteers. Boys and Girls Club as well, we need people to be with our kiddos after school, so, and during, during the days when they're at the clubs. So there's an opportunity for all of us to get involved, and I would encourage all of our community members to reach out and ask how they can help. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Allison Kelly, and I serve as the Chief Executive Officer for Liberty House, which is the community assessment center serving Marion and Polk Counties. And so I think the easiest way to explain what Liberty House's role is, is to think about what happens next after someone makes that report that the District Attorney talked about. That report goes to the screening unit at Department of Human Services, and they're very good experienced at what they do, and then they make assignments. And each local community has a multidisciplinary team, and I am grateful to say we have such dedicated and experienced people, both in all of our law enforcement agencies and DHS, and they work together, and they work together with Liberty House and often at Liberty House to help that process of responding be easier for the family. And then we provide the medical assessment. We have trained forensic interviewers who can listen to a child and then give that child an opportunity to explain what's happened to them. So that's really important, and what we want to stress here is how important it is for people just to become more educated and more aware of the topic in all of its forms. One thing, in a meeting with many of our detectives early this year, we went around the room, and we said, "What do we want to see different this year, next year, that's not happening this year?" And every single detective in the room said, "I wish we could get the word out how devastating it is when children send online images of themselves that someone else has asked them to send. Those are prominent, and when they, when they sext, send negative pictures of themselves." And that's a really important message that we want to get out. That's part of it. Somebody likely asked that child to do that. So cyber safety and online activity is at the top of the list of getting educated about ways. And I have a very good friend who works in law enforcement who told the story of when his teens were starting to get involved in kind of a bullying thing that was ramping up and escalating online, and he noticed it and sat him down, and it was a teachable moment. He could say, "You know, that's not what we want to do as a family. Think about how that child is going to feel if you post that negative thing online about them." So it's very much related to bullying, and that's very much related to suicide. We have eight of those in our county last year, suicide. So it's all connected. So that's that piece. At Liberty House, during the month of April, Child Abuse Prevention Month, we'll be offering two trainings, one on Thursday, April 5, from 9:00 to noon, and one on, it's Monday, April 23, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m., and that's called Darkness to Light: Stewards of Children. And that's a way of becoming more aware of child sexual abuse and how to recognize signs, how to protect your children. Very important, and I would encourage everybody who's able, who hasn't been through that training to go. I can't tell you how many parents I've talked with who were just heartbroken that something was happening to their child, and it was right under their noses and they never knew, and, you know, you kind of can't remember those bells. But you can get help and therapy, which is another thing that we do. So with that, we do know there are a number of cases of neglect in Marion County, and for people who want to learn a little bit more about what neglect is, just think in terms of the parent or caregiver's responsibility to meet the physical safety needs, clothing needs, food needs, and medical needs of their child. There's a very good resource book on the DHS website that says what you can do about child abuse, and some good language in that book that helps people understand the responsibilities of parents. These cases, and really all cases in general, are rising. You heard Patrice say that the number is rising. I understood recently from one of our leaders at DHS that also the calls to the hotline in our county have jumped. So five years ago, the calls to the hotline were about 8,500 a year in Marion and Polk Counties. Last year, my understanding is that there were 10,500 calls from Marion County alone. So it's important that we lean in and try to get some good resources, so, and that's where the entire community can come in.
Good morning. My name's Pete Teller, Counselor here in Salem at Leslie Middle School. And from the screen, you see that it lets us know that we should tell a friend or a trusted adult. That's because we don't want anyone to suffer in silence. In schools, we find ourselves generally on the front line of being involved with our youth and children from the day they enter the school buildings. And I'd like to let you know a little bit from what Allison just shared of something that we've just introduced in the school system this year for the very first time. I don't know if you've had a chance to be introduced or be informed about SAFE Oregon, but SAFE Oregon is coordinated through the Oregon State Police, and it's a tip line, an anonymous tip line, for students to be able to report anonymously bullying, violence, drugs, or harm that they see to anyone or that they hear about at school. They can do that online, by email, through calling or texting, and there's also an app that you can download from iTunes or Google Play. This is an important step in our district in regards to preventing child abuse. It's not to replace the hotline, but this is especially designed to help with bullying reduction in our schools and by keeping children safe in that way. So again, no one should suffer in silence. We're trying to improve the avenues that we have of being able to have people report what needs to get told to the adults. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Sue Bloom. I'm the Executive Director of the Boys and Girls Club of Salem, Marion and Polk Counties. Our role is to serve throughout our community, ages 6 through 18, particularly those who need us most. This is very relevant for our organization. Thank you. So prevention is the key, and truly, it takes all of us to support our children and our families to help prevent child abuse. And you'll see on possibly the next slide that there is a link to resources, there is a link to resources, and you can reach it from the county page for parentsforthefuture.org, and it provides a wide range of resources and supports and education for us as citizens of our community.
So you've been hearing from great partners in our community that provide service, serve the communities in various ways. However, there's a way for us all to do our part, not only in our homes, but show our collective energy and support behind this initiative of preventing child abuse in our community. Friday, April 6, the Blue Ribbon Tree that I mentioned that will be at the Capitol will also be the backdrop for this event. It's going to start at 8:30 in the morning with Chamber of Commerce greeters downstairs at the Capitol, and then at 10 o'clock, we'll be convening outside of the Capitol in front of the Blue Ribbon Tree. Not only do we invite all of you to be there with us, we also invite any community member that is available at 10 a.m. or even 8:30 in the morning to join us for greeters, to join us at the Capitol. I think showing our presence there will be an important symbolism to those who've been victims of child abuse, who have, who know others that have been abused, and to know that there is a community full of support and services that are really geared to help people mitigate those and find healing in ways that matter in their lives, not only today, but in the future.
And at this time, I'd like to call up the peer helpers from Leslie Middle School, and if we could have them line up over here by the front door. A universal way in which we can all prevent child abuse and neglect is by taking the hands and words are not for hurting pledge. And in just a moment, once we get organized here, we're going to leave all of you doing just that this morning.
Pete, I'm not sure if they could, I'm not sure if they're, are the cameras set up to go over there when you ask? You can get them? Okay, then, fine, stay where you are.
All right, so, Mirela, can you start us off? So at this time, we'll start in Spanish by saying the hands and words are not for hurting pledge, so please repeat after Mirela as she leads us in Spanish. Please raise your right hand.
No, usaré. No usaré.
Mis manos.
Mis manos.
O palabras.
O mis palabras.
Para lastimar.
Para lastimar.
A otros.
A otros.
O a mi mismo.
O a mi mismo.
Gosh.
Let's keep your right hand up and join me in Spanish. I will not use my hands.
I will not use my hands.
Or my words.
Or my words.
For hurting myself.
For hurting myself.
Or others.
So I know he wants to show you, but Commissioner Cameron wears a wristband daily, but why do you say mean things to me in spite of that?
Well, actually, they're just words of love. You know that. You know, that's just how we express our fun things with each other. It's interesting, may I mention?
Yeah, why don't we, did you comment? Are you, is the person?
One more, one more.
Okay, Julie.
I just wanted to obviously wrap up, but I wanted to mention that I feel like we have something rare and a treasure here in the county and the city that over 20 nonprofits have gathered together, city officials and government, to really focus on Child Abuse Prevention Month. This year, too, we have the most proclamations that we're going to have in the county, which is really exciting. City of Stateon, City of Saville, Almsville, Woodburn, and the City of Salem City Council will also be proclaiming April's Child Abuse Prevention Month. I need to give a shout out, obviously, to Salem Electric. It's a really big deal that they're donating all of their hours to put the ribbons up, and that is really crucial to the iconic Blue Ribbon Tree and then also taking them down. And then I just want to end with, we had an opportunity to be placing ads in the chariot buses this year, and I really just want to remind everyone that parenting is hard, parenting is messy, but it's better with support, and we're all here to help. And this is a list of all of the nonprofits that have really gathered around this, this month and this proclamation, and this interest in making sure that we're really reaching out to parents, and we're really reaching out to city and residents as they think about how they can support this month's, this month's theme. So thank you very much for your gracious time.
Great, thank you. Commissioner?
Madam Chair, since my colleague commented on the bracelet I have, it's interesting that, I think I have probably four or five of these up in my office still, maybe, maybe I need another supply, but as I try, you know, I go on vacations once in a while, and in Indonesia, I met a young man on an island. He's got one of these now because he wanted my bracelet. And then just this last year, a gentleman was walking down the beach in Placentia, Belize, selling cashews from Honduras, and we were talking, you know, I love to talk to people from other places, and he saw my bracelet. And he saw my bracelet and he said, "What is that?" And I explained to him and gave him the bracelet. So I was without one for that week. But when I got back, I got in my drawer and put it back on, put another one back on. So there's, some of these not only here in Oregon, and I know around the United States, but in other countries. And you never know how that may make a difference in somebody's life down the road when you, when you can just talk to one person about it. But it's pretty cool. Yeah, I have been, I'm glad you noticed that. You said some kind of things to me today. That's pretty nice.
Just the way I am.
Just the way you are. Yeah.
Well, I do, and Julie was kind of getting at it, what a magnificent team we have gathered from all different areas to try to make it better here. But I ask a question annually, and I'm, get ready, Walt, I'm coming your way, and you'll give me the same answer, and I'm going to take some of it away. And it's always about our things getting better. But you'll say the numbers are up because more people are aware, that you've educated more people, or people understand what's going on and they do report it. Allison, I heard a number of calls up, you know, 25% from last year. That doesn't say to me that it's getting better unless, well, you're right, it just means people know. So, any comment? Is it getting better?
Yeah. Madam Chair, Commissioner Brenton, I appreciate you coming at me every year with this question. I really do. Let me tell you what is getting better. Our team is getting better. We're getting better at addressing the gravity of the problem that our communities face across this nation. We're, we're teaming up in the moment to respond to a child in need, and we're getting them on that path that Tammy described, healing much sooner. And so, I feel our team, just physically here today, you've got this front line, literally in front of the Board of Commissioners, that is dedicated to this. So I think, I think that's the good news, is every year I come back, I can tell you I feel so much better about reaching those little ones. You're right, though, I, I think we haven't really figured out the depth of this problem yet. And this awareness campaign, the reporting statute, all of these critical elements are really kind of unfolding the scope of the problem. And, and that we haven't reached all the numbers yet. We know the disclosures, it's under disclosed, it's, it's complex, it impacts different geographies of our communities differently. And so, that's the tough part, Commissioner. And until I think we've hit the, hit the bottom of that, I think that the answer may be the same. I know my team is probably just all kind of leaning in, wanting to kind of share or build upon that, but I think, I think that's part of it, Commissioner.
Anything else?
So I have so many thoughts, and I have just realized, this is my 16th proclamation, and the last one I'll be doing is a county commissioner. I want to thank all of you for being here, for all of the work that you do. As I'm looking across you all and thinking about where you touch families, we're talking about child abuse prevention. And I look at Walt, your folks are not, you're on the end when you're finding out the cases and working on them, so the abuse has already happened. Allison, you're there to do those exams and to restore that family and to help. But again, the deed has already been done, and we're looking at that. I look at family building blocks. Healthy Start is one example of what we tried to do to get on that prevention end. So when a mom has that first baby, she's open to information and perhaps will, will be willing to have people support her. And the dad too, obviously dads are, are critical in this. Pete, you bring your kids every year, and it's so amazing, I mean, you're on the front lines too. And this age of middle school is so pivotal in terms of where kids are at, what they're experiencing, what, what direction they're going to go in terms of, of moving towards adulthood, and helping them to understand that it's important to share if something happens, and important to, to be that trusted friend. Not just to tell a trusted friend, but to be that trusted friend is so critical. So thank you for what you do. Boys and Girls Club, again, right on the front lines of helping kids every day. And then Shani, your CASs are there, and they do, I have so many stories of CASs that not only work on that case for the six months or a year, however long those cases take, but continue to mentor those kids that they have been connected with and help move them back into a family that's going to, so they don't experience it again. And that is really important as well. When I think about the dynamics of why people would abuse their child, I mean, it's just basically, what's the word I'm looking for? I can't, I guess unfathomable, that's the word I'm looking for, about why anyone would abuse their child. And yet, as you're saying, Julie, parenting is messy, families are under stress. And I cannot say with a clear conscience that I went through raising three kids without screaming at them many more times than once. When you're at the end of your rope, it's, it's difficult when you're under stress to control those tempers and to have the strategies to be able to deal with kids in a way that is, makes, is positive and helps everyone move forward. Oftentimes, I think alcohol and drugs are involved in the abuse that we see. And when people are under the spell of addiction and, and end up not being themselves. And again, I don't think there's any excuse, I'm not making excuses for people, there's no excuse for abusing a child. But certainly there are dynamics and things that we understand that contribute to that. Mental health issues, and we have nonprofits in the county working on that as well. And then we've seen this ballooning increase of homelessness in our community, and, and we have high levels of poverty in our community. And I've always said, because my dad and mom grew up in the depression, they lived in severe poverty, that is what I can't even imagine. And they were not abused, and they did not abuse us as a result of that. I don't think poverty is an excuse or a cause, but certainly the neglect part of it becomes difficult for people when they're living in a car, not able to provide food the next day to kind of, or just looking to how they get from day to day, to be able to understand then how they can take care of their children in that environment. So yes, I think reporting is really important, but I think drilling down to figure out how we stop that event from happening in the first place is where I'd really like to see us be with all the great services that we have after the fact. I don't think we have enough before the fact, and I, and I'd like to see more of that. The Safe Oregon, we did have a presentation by the state police at our Public Safety Council, and thank you for bringing that forward. One of the questions I had is, when we had that presentation, is it's only as good as than what the people that receive the call and get the information do with it afterwards? And so I'm really hopeful that Salem Kaiser is taking those calls in and acting upon them and making sure that, that, that they're followed up on and, and that things happen because of it. And then the last comment that I would make is that the hands and words are not for hurting pledge. I just love that pledge. Ann Kelly comes every year, and, and you come with her in October, I think it is, is the month that we do that. And Ann came over and visited with me, I think a month or so ago, and was really interested. And I actually gave her a number of names and phone numbers, and she may have been in touch with you, about how she could get this, you know, Leslie Middle School has been doing this forever. And, and my son, my, my baby boy, Christian, he's 32, and he went to the Elsinore Theater when, I can't remember what grade he was in, might have been in the, I can't remember what year, it was probably, it was in the 90s. I still, I, we're moving, and I found the purple gloves in a drawer, I've got them at home, that he wore when he was at the Elsinore, and everybody did the hands and words are not for hurting. And it, there's still little remnants of it in our community, but we do that proclamation every year, so we kind of talk the talk, but we're not really walking the walk as a community with that as much anymore, present company excluded, and your youth, but that, you know, so we, we're looking at, and Ashley Marshall, who is working as a policy analyst, has contacted Ann about how with these new buildings that we have, because I know we have one in the, in the transition center, right? But, but maybe we could have some of those, what do they call them? Placards or?
Fingers.
Yeah, the, they're not posters, they're big cardboard things that come up. We could have some of those maybe in our health building, in our public safety buildings, in our juvenile buildings, and, and also get some of the, the information out in a way that we're doing that, reminded of that more every year. And she's got, Ann had some ideas of what some other counties have done, Clamath County, I guess has really jumped in and done some great work with that. So hopefully, when you come in October, we'll have a report about what Marion County's doing to more intentionally keep that hands and words more than just a once-a-year proclamation, but something that we do every day. So I've gone on way too long, but again, I just want to thank you all for what you do and for being here so that we can have this proclamation today.
I'm not really making an offer because John will get nervous, but I think you know you have a very sympathetic board here, and probably never a more sympathetic commissioner for eight months. So if you can think of something that helps, that the county can do, we'll certainly take a look at it.
Thank you.
So do you have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll move that we approve a proclamation designating the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Marion County.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. All in favor, say aye.
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 And we will read the proclamation, and let's start. Commissioner Cameron, would you like to start?
Sure. Before the Board of Commissioners of Marion County, Oregon, in the matter of proclaiming April Child Abuse Prevention Month, the matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled meeting at March 21st, 2018, to proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas every child deserves to live in a safe, loving, and caring family environment, and?
Whereas in 2016, there were 11,843 reported victims of child abuse and neglect in Oregon. Of those reported cases, 1,255 were victims in Marion County. And whereas we endeavor to join together as individuals, organizations, and government agencies to prevent child abuse in our county by providing opportunities to educate, train, and support caregivers by raising awareness of relevant topics, including child development, basic care skills, discipline strategies, and goal-setting for our parents, and?
Whereas by strengthening families and providing safe, stable, and nurturing environments that are free from violence, abuse, and neglect, opportunities are created for children's optimal growth and success, ensuring a secure future for our communities where the needs of children are a priority and the needs of families are met. Now therefore, the Marion County Board of Commissioners asks everyone to join together in protecting our children and thus hereby proclaim April 2018 as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
That's our proclamation, and we will see you at the Capitol.
Thank you very much for all of your support.
Thank you. And we're signing the proclamation. Tammy, is there, we have a couple kind of ceremonial ones. Do you, did you want, Tammy, did you want to take the proclamation?
Sure.
Fortunately, this year, everyone's here. I remember when they blew it up and it said, "Not present at me."
That's not.
Okay, I think we're going to give her one of them, and we're going to keep the rest for the record, right? There we go.
Very much.
Thank you. Christie. Right. Boy, Alan, now you get, where are you? Alan Haley?
I'm right here.
There you are. You're already up there, my goodness.
Follow that.
All right, yeah, that's, okay. Consider adoption of an ordinance ratifying the creation of the Oregon Association of County Engineers and Surveyors, Oasis. Alan Haley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, Alan Haley, Public Works. Before you is an ordinance that's looking to do and ratify the Oasis Group, which is a group that are, is a statewide organization of our engineers and surveyors. It came to you before as an IGA, and it came to you because it was recognized that, through some financial accounting, that Oasis didn't actually have any standing after years and years of, of being an organization. They are now a, were helped by the Association of Oregon Counties. The AOC manages our assets, the group's assets. And through a banking issue, we came across the fact that AOC actually needed to have more standing to be able to assist the Oasis Group. So in 2016, you approved an IGA recognizing that Oasis would be a part of AOC. At that time, though, we failed to bring forward or forgot an ordinance which actually, per ORS, is needed to actually ratify the creation of the group. So today, in front of you, is the ordinance which ratifies Oasis as a group underneath and inside the Association of Oregon Counties. A little bit complicated, but this will, this formalizes the actions that you took in 2016.
All right. Questions or comments?
None at all. Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we adopt the ordinance that ratifies the creation of Oregon Association of County Engineers and Surveyors.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance, and we're adopting it by emergency procedure, correct? Yes, it actually says that on the, yeah. So both of them are by emergency.
So that's the motion, then?
All right. Otherwise, we can't adopt it today. We have to do a first reading. All right, so, so if we're doing it by emergency, then I think we need to change the motion to have the chair read it by title only.
I'll make that motion that we read the ordinance by title only twice. Have the chair do that.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, that the chair read the ordinance by title only twice. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so I will read it by title only twice. An ordinance creating an intergovernmental entity by intergovernmental agreement known as the Oregon Association of County Engineers and Surveyors, or Oasis, and declaring an emergency. And the second time? An ordinance creating an intergovernmental entity by intergovernmental agreement known as the Oregon Association of County Engineers and Surveyors, or Oasis, and declaring an emergency.
So Madam Chair, now I would like to make a motion that adopts the ordinance ratifying the creation of Oregon Association of County Engineers and Surveyors.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. All in favor, say aye.
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 And it is adopted. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, last item, also under Public Works, and Joe Fenimore is here for that one, it's to consider adoption of an administrative ordinance for Legislative Amendment 17-002 regarding amendments to the Marion County Code, Title 17 Rural Zone Code. And this is also going to be by emergency procedure.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Fenimore. This item before you today is to consider adoption of an administrative ordinance amending the Rural Zone Code by emergency procedure. As you know, in state, under state law and administrative rules, a county has the options of whether or not to allow commercial solar farms to be placed in farm zones. If a county chooses to allow these, state statutes require them to be a conditional use, and also administrative rules contain minimum standards that must be met. In 2011, Marion County, the current Marion County Zone Code was updated to allow these facilities as a conditional use, and the standards were, state standards were adopted into the zone code. In 2015, the county began receiving conditional use applications for these facilities in the farm zone that some individuals or organizations contacted the county with concerns about allowing these on the higher value farm soils. Based on these concerns, on January 31st, the Board adopted a resolution to consider amending the zone code to adopt additional standards and criteria to apply in high value farm, in the farm zones on high value farm soils. Public hearing was scheduled for March 14th. At that hearing, the Board heard testimony on the proposed amendments, and after considering the Planning Division filed all the arguments and testimony of the parties, the Board decided to repeal the provisions in the code to allow these solar facilities at this time. And they directed staff to work with the Planning Commission to gather stakeholders from both sides to come up with proposals that in the future may be able to allow these facilities in the farm zones, but still protect the high value farm soils. Once again, these are just the commercial, large commercial farms. These don't apply to the small residential ones you see on houses, or that some farms have to help supplement their, the power they're using. The ordinance repealing the provisions in the EFU and SA zone have been prepared, is now set for adoption by emergency procedure. The Board has the option of adopting the ordinance before you, direct staff to modify the ordinance or choose not to adopt the ordinance at this time. Staff recommends the Board adopt the ordinance before you by emergency procedure by reading it by title twice. I'll be happy to answer any questions. it by title twice, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I have just some comments, after reading that I'm anti-business and anti-solar arrays, just a little bit of a comment, I'm not, I'm all for it. All I want to do is protect Marion County's most valuable farmland and try to get these sited into places that are more appropriate. That's the issue, and that's all I wanted to say.
I thought everything I read was true.
See, look at your wristband.
Right. No, just to want to clarify, Joe, that, for example, I went up to, I think it's George Packing, the hazelnut processing, right at the north end of Marion County up there, they have this solar array right next to their processing plant. This would not prevent a processor from doing that right there on their processing, et cetera, that normal business operations like that, correct?
Correct. This applies to facilities that are, a commercial power generating facility, so they're actually generating power just to sell on the market.
Yeah, so I'm with the Commissioner, we want to promote this in really good ways, and I think we just need to make sure that we're doing it right, and I appreciate the Commissioner's motion last week to stop it and say, let's take a timeout and figure out how to do this, and that's what this is all about, and we really want to encourage you to make sure that if you need some help bringing people together or whatever, just, I want to be there to make sure, because that is a big job for you.
All right, thank you.
And I'll just add my two cents worth, we heard from a lot of people last week, I was amazed at how many people came, and a lot of passionate people on both sides of the issue. Certainly people concerned from a business perspective, people concerned from an agriculture perspective, and so there were a lot of valid things that were said. I do think it's important for us to keep perspective on this, and I think that's really what Commissioner Brentano was alluding to in his comments, that's how I took them anyway, and that is that if we were to cover every inch of farm ground in Marion County with solar panels, I don't, I think it would still be an nth of a percent of our total ability to provide electrical power. I mean, and so, again, this is, I mean, this is being promoted now, there's certain folks that believe that this is cleaner energy, and we've heard that, than other energy. I want to make sure that, and I think as Commissioners we do this, that there's a balance there where we understand where this fits in and why we're looking at not necessarily allowing these everywhere, just because there are other ways that energy is created that aren't as politically acceptable these days, but certainly have a much higher proportion and potential, hydro being one, I'll just put that one out there.
Example.
Right, and so I just don't want, you know, we're not just going to jump on the solar bandwagon and say that that's the answer to everything, there's got to be a portfolio of strategies for us to get to our energy needs, and I'm certainly a believer in conserving energy, and I'm certainly a believer in trying to make sure that we look at all of our different options, but I'm not just going to put everything by the wayside to make this possible, and I think the timeout that we're doing is a good thing, and Commissioners' comment about, I think it was when we were, I can't remember who we were talking to, but the idea that we would have had the first set of standards and then have another set of standards while we were trying to figure out the third set of standards would have been way confusing for people, so this is, I think, a much better solution. And we said all applicable ordinances, and it looks like we have three sections here with a lot of lines crossed out, so hopefully this will get the job done.
Madam Chair, I'll, if that's all right, I'll move that the board adopt this ordinance by emergency procedure and that the chair read by title only twice.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second, that the chair read the ordinance by title only twice, all in favor, say aye.
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 So this one's a little easier to read than the last one. In the matter of an ordinance amending Marion County Code Title 17 Rural Zone Code, provisions and declaring an emergency. And again, in the matter of an ordinance amending Marion County Code Title 17 Rural Zone Code, provisions and declaring an emergency.
And Madam Chair, I'll move that we adopt an administrative ordinance for Legislative Amendment LA 17002 regarding amendments to the Marion County Code Title 17.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance, is there any further discussion? Everybody's made all their comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, that's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our business today, there are no public hearings. I'll go ahead and read our Wednesday to Wednesday calendar, these are meetings where two or three Commissioners will be present between March 21st today and March 28th, 2018. So we're just concluding our board session here at the Senator Hearing Room. On March 21st, we will be leaving shortly to go to a county community forum with the State and Rotary that will be held at the Saniam Golf Club, 8724 Golf Club Road, southeast in Omsville. Then tomorrow, Thursday, March 22nd, at 1:30, is the Marion County Justice Reinvestment Council quarterly meeting that will be held in the Commissioners' Boardroom here at Courthouse Square on the fifth floor. That will be followed at 3 o'clock by a Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Work Group, also held in the Commissioners' Boardroom here at Courthouse Square. And then from 4 to 6 is a retirement reception for Mayor Chuck Bennett, who is, has been for many years employed with COSA, the Confederation of Oregon School Administrators. That reception will be over at their offices at 707 13th Street, Southeast, Suite 100 in Salem. Monday, March 26th, at 8:30 in the morning, is our weekly calendar review, that's in the Silverton Conference Room at Courthouse Square here in Salem, followed at 9:00 a.m. with management update, same place, followed at 11:00 a.m. by a Board of Commissioners' Chief Administrative Officer with executive sessions noticed if needed pursuant to all the various ORS's 192662A, B, D, F, H, and I. That will begin immediately following management update, if management update ends before 11, and it will be held in the Silverton Conference Room at Courthouse Square. Tuesday, March 27th, at 8:30 is Community Corrections Board, Silverton Conference Room, Courthouse Square, followed by a work session, also in the Silverton Conference Room, on the Tax Exemptions Programs, rural enterprise, and Brownfield sites. At noon on March 27th is the Public Safety Coordinating Council Steering Committee in the Silverton Conference Room, and then a week from today, March 28th, at 9:00 a.m., we're back in the Senator Hearing Room for our regular Wednesday board session. 11:15 to 1 is the City of Salem State of the City address at the Salem Convention Center, I guess we're all going to that, 200 Commercial Street in Salem. And then finally, on Wednesday, March 28th, at 3:30, is an executive session pursuant to ORS 192662H, I think that's bargaining, in the Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor here in Salem. So that's a little bit more than we usually have on the calendar, it seems like, busy weeks lately, so.
So we're leaving for my State and Rotary Club.
We are?
Yes. And I'm always afraid I just tell them the same things, so I was thinking.
You don't want to talk about garbage this year?
No, they're tired of it. But what I, what I actually had, wish we could have done, I thought about it, even just showing a video of that group that we just had and say, here's the kind of things we care about, if that wouldn't have been more effective than me talking about garbage.
Well, it's on Facebook Live, you know, you can just go, you could probably like.
Well, tell them to look at it.
Yeah.
Our State of the County speech?
No.
No, the one we just did here, the Child Abuse Prevention Proclamation. Just rewind it to that spot.
Say, watch this, this is what we care about.
Yeah. Well, you'll have to think about what, you know, you can talk about anything you want to, you don't have to talk about garbage, so.
They've heard it for a long time now, yeah, I gotta.
Why don't you talk about your, the concerns that you have over the SCAS stuff? Have they heard about that a lot, too?
Do you like it when I look like a fanatic, but I am? All right, I will, I will.
I'm not wearing a brace.
Sorry, you got me, you got me started, because this is where we tell them you can't drive into Salem anymore.
Right, yeah, there you go.
That's exactly what it is.
Right, and the fish passage, that would be interesting, too, I think we probably.
They care about that, and certainly water that matters to the farms there.
Yeah. So I talked to Barb about your, the mayor's comment yesterday, so when that meeting comes up.
Go ahead and just say it, they were trying to organize a meeting with the federal delegation.
Well, yeah, but Schrader's office is organizing it, and they're going to send out the invites once they get it all set up, so it's not coming from us.
It just sounded like it was moving along, and he didn't know anything about it, I thought, oh.
Yeah, it's premature.
We're talking about Salem Mayor being involved with discussions on Detroit.
Stakeholders.
And we want him there, obviously.
Right.
So many people affected.
It's interesting how that came up. Where were we? Oh, Public Works yesterday, remember, I didn't even bring it up, somebody asked the question. I mean, it's, it's out there, there's so many people that know about it and are impacted by it, that, and I think that's good news. Last night, just went to the Sheriff's Advisory Council, or Advisory Board, first time I'd gone out there with them, they let me out of jail, by the way, after I was done, that was pretty nice of them.
Isn't it?
I was at the jail, and on that Public Safety Service District, they were really, you know, they asked some really good questions, had some really good input towards it, and then at the end, they said, hey, we want to participate and help with this and be involved, this is great, so it was a positive thing last night. It was a good week, or, I mean, it was, Monday and Tuesday were, I mean, today's Wednesday, but it's been a good week already, good week of meetings.
Yep.
Success stuff.
All right.
All right. Well, shall we call this today?
Can you get ready for me to be wound up and?
Yeah, you'll need to work on it.
You could just go ahead and take my nine minutes.
Don't I usually?
Well, I, I'm good, I'll just fill in the blanks.
You know what, I'm not going to say anything now, you pushed me over there.
No, 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 no.
I'm going to have you start.
No.
Then you can do the fish passage second, and then I'll wrap up.
You think that's, that's the biggest concern out there, I mean, that we should talk about is bring that fish, bring the water issue up?
Yeah, I do, yeah, right. So you want to do that first, you want to do that first, then, and then you go after?
No, no, that's Sam's Rotary.
Yeah, I think you need to start.
I want to think of something, I want to see, but the other one that I, maybe it isn't a big issue yet, but that railroad thing is certainly always festering in the Omsville State and area. I don't know where we're going with that.
I haven't heard anything about it.
Okay.
I don't know where we are with the study.
Been in the newspaper, they were complimentary of the study.
Yeah. Lynn County yesterday, interesting always to go down there, but bringing them up to date like we needed to, and not, we didn't make an ask, Danielle did a really good job. But they, yeah, they, you know, on the Lynn County side in the canyon, they don't have the need for the, as much for a sewer system.
No.
But they did say, have I reached out to Frank and Ferris? I, well, I have a relationship, but I haven't really talked about this issue specifically, so I need to do that, and see where they're at with it, if they're supportive or needs or whatever.
I couldn't see it that they'd have a need.
I don't think so.
With the amount of ground they have.
Right.
And septic that they must have.
Right. The one thing I did take away was, and Danielle got his card, but their environmental septic guy, the can-do attitude, and they tried to figure out, they've had, one of the questions that their Commissioners asked him was, are you doing a lot of denials? Because that's what Danielle said was happening on our side. And he said, no, I think it's probably more status quo, because people have been educated towards the issues, and they may not be bringing them up, but he said, when we get requests, we're trying to go out and trying to figure out how to make it happen for people, which I thought was really a good, good way.
Well, we've been trying to do that here, and I might just give you a happenstance, after we left Public Works, I went up and spoke to Planning, and then Warren Jackson was talking to septic people, as a matter of fact, so of course I said, can I join in?
Oh, good.
Well, the message I got out of them, that contrary to last year, that they have the staff they need, and they're actually all caught up, so not hearing those backlog things, so that's good news.
So we probably need to, I got to be careful here, we probably need to make sure that what community services staff is looking at from data and what you just heard are the same.
Okay.
Because they're actually pulling some data on permits and processes, or at least they did, and I'll have to go back and find out, I thought it was interesting that they were doing that, they had, they're doing some research on that issue, and find out when that research was done, because I got some numbers from them that was kind of interesting that I thought, okay, at least we could track this and see what kind of improvements we're making, yeah.
Yeah, I hope it's true, it sounded like.
Yeah, good.
All right. Well, a lot of good things going on, and we'll be going to State today, so that's great, too. All right, if there's nothing else, we will adjourn.